We good, ready?
All right.
All right, it is six o'clock, it's Monday, August 7th. We'll call our meeting in order and start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item of business is the roll call.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Next, do we have approval of tonight's agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Colister, seconded by Lyon. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
All right, item five is public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council tonight? Okay, anybody in Zoom land? Okay, if not, we'll move on. Item six is presentations. A being the second quarter building inspector's report.
Good evening, guys. Here to do my second quarter presentation of, I guess, my wife's work right now. As you've read in your report, we have thirty-four building permits issued this year, as of this year, June thirtieth, or less than a year ago. Many small projects this year, not too many big projects. And of course, we have, we do have some framing going on at a house up at Meadow Park, so that's good news. The walls are coming up, so you can see it, and I think that's a good thing. We have a local contractor now up there also doing the public sidewalk, the western and summit, so I know that's on everybody's mind, which has been on my mind too, but we've been trying to push everybody to get it done, and we do have a local contractor started today doing some digging up there for that, to get the ADA crossings and connections to our sidewalks there. Still inspecting most of the permits as much as I can. Still have, you know, I try to get to the bigger ones like the jail and the 4-H building once a week, trying to catch up with what they're doing, and those types of things. Also, I added another board that I'm involved in, and that's the Building Code of Appeals Board. So we do have a meeting Thursday afternoon, because I have someone that wants to appeal the decision I made. So we'll have that and go through that, so now I've got five boards I'm dealing with occasionally. I mean, it just takes some time to deal with that, you know, getting everything organized. Next would be rental. Jan and I have sent out all the rental renewals. We have approximately ninety percent of those back already, which is way ahead of last year. I did charge some penalties last year on a few, so I think they got the message a little bit to get them in as timely as they could. This year, we'll be inspecting the single-family and duplexes mostly. Roughly three hundred and fifty of them, trying to get about a third done this year. That's going to take a little bit of time, because you've got to go from place to place to place instead of multifamily and trailer courts like I did last year where you could do several of them in an hour or two, you know. Had a lot of property maintenance cases going on. I've got fifty cases right now open. I have charged six properties in this second quarter with municipal infractions. Some have done some things after they've been charged, some haven't, so we have to wait a time period, and then we have to decide what we're going to do. Some are structural. So Josh and I will decide which way to go with some things, you know, like if we have to patch a roof or take a fence down, or something like that, that's bad, you know, so that just takes time, and we'll have to figure out who's going to do it, probably bid out some stuff. I've got some that are more, I don't know if I'd say landscaping, but cutting down some bushes and trees and that kind of stuff too, so I'll bid some of that stuff out. But, you know, it seems like things are working. When I say fifty cases, that means I'm doing a little bit more than just knocking on the door. If it's a knock on the door, tell them to clean something up, and they clean it up right away, I don't even make a case, because that's just wasting my time. I get a lot of that, I'll get an email with three or four property complaints about maybe some minor things. Try to make it out there, knock on the door, tell them I'll come back in a couple of days, make sure it gets done. Usually it's done. Those that don't do that, that's when I start making a case, take some pictures, start working the paper trail with them, and eventually if nothing gets done, or if I can't get them to move, it goes to the attorney, so. Any questions?
No questions, but I'm glad we're finally pushing the municipal infraction, getting some of these properties cleaned up. It's time.
It's definitely a painstaking time thing, but we've got to go through the steps.
We appreciate it.
All right.
Okay, thanks, Brad. If you're guys in the back, there is some seating up here, so you don't have to stand. All right, we move on to item seven, it's a public hearing. It's a public hearing regarding the city's community development and housing needs assessment.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, Tricia's here from ECIA, and I don't know how you want to organize out some of this public input, because I assume much of the audience here tonight's for the Sunshine Project. How did you, do you want that to happen in the public hearing, or do you want to go to the resolution? How did you want to receive that public input and presentation?
Let's say during the, during the hearing.
During the public hearing?
During the hearing.
Okay, that sounds good. Then Tricia, I think we'll just have Mackie and whoever else wants to speak after your comments in this item. Thank you.
All right. Tricia Wagner with ECIA. So as part of the application for the Community Development Block Grant for Sunshine Learning Center, we have to have a community development and housing needs assessment on file that is no more than a year old, and the last time we did this was February of 2022. So Iowa Economic Development Authority and HUD require that we do this again. They have this in their packet, right, Josh?
That's correct.
Okay, so I don't need to read through the entire thing. What I will do is just let you know what I've updated, because we do have to have the topic of the application in the top ten of these items listed. And so I have added as number two, the create available childcare. And then at the bottom, under the proposed and possible actions to address community development housing needs, I've added number five, which is to apply to IEDA, CDBG, and other funding sources for childcare center improvement and expansion projects. So that concludes what we have done to update your CDHNA for the application.
Does anybody have any questions?
Motion to close the public hearing.
We've got a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second? Which one? And we have a second by Lyon. We have no discussion, take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
All right, item B is a public hearing regarding the city's Community Development Block Grant, Community Facilities and Services Application for the Sunshine Learning Center project.
Okay, so similarly, the Iowa Economic Development Authority and HUD require that we go through nine points that highlight the project and the application. So I will just read through, there's a series of nine items, and I will just read through them for you. Macocota City Staff and Jackson County Economic Alliance surveyed area employers related to workforce housing needs. Aside from workers, the chief complaint and concern of private employers is childcare. City leaders have identified the specific need and shortage of infant-to-two-year-old childcare. City staff and JCEA interviewed multiple childcare facilities, and each had unique characteristics, but Sunshine Learning Center is the single largest childcare facility in the city and a critical asset to the community. The limited childcare providers available in Macocota tend to have staffing issues, but Sunshine Learning Center has consistent, reliable staff that have stayed with them for years. The problem they face is the age of the building. The center has increasingly deteriorated over time due to high maintenance costs hindering their budget, prohibiting much-needed large-scale repairs. In 2223, they replaced two commercial furnaces, a commercial air conditioner, a large freezer, a commercial stove, a water heater, many electrical issues, and more. Despite recent attempts at fundraising, Sunshine Learning Center still is in a difficult financial position, and their financial need is evident by the aged and deteriorating structure that continues to go unaddressed due to the lack of funds after payroll and utility expenses. Closure of Sunshine daycare would be catastrophic to the city. The total project budget is estimated at $575,000. The city of Macocota will apply for CDBG funding for approximately eighty percent of these costs and provide an estimated twenty percent local match from their general fund in the amount of $120,000. The application will be submitted on August 22nd, 2023. $480,000 of this will be CDBG funds, and that does include the administration fee for ECIA to administer the grant after awarded. The center currently serves fifty-three households. An income survey was conducted using a sample size of forty-nine of these households per grant guidelines, and the survey results indicate that fifty-four percent of these persons and their children enrolled at Sunshine Learning Center qualify as low to moderate income status. And Sunshine Learning Center is located centrally at 101 Crest Lane Drive in Macocota. And the childcare center accepts all residents in Macocota and Jackson County in the area, and therefore, on a first-come, first-served basis, and no persons will be displaced by this project. And lastly, the nature of the activities, the proposed renovations to the childcare center to improve the safety and capacity include replacing the parking lot, curb gutters, and modifying the entrance for the designated drop-off pickup area, adding an ADA-compliant sidewalk and parking spaces, reworking the playground's perimeter fencing, replacing deteriorated archways at the entrance, replacing the roof, exterior doors, and adding an exit door, replacing windows and interior doors, reconfiguring the current space to add a new classroom, and ADA-compliant restrooms, including finishes, reconfiguring the front desk and storage room to allow for a secured entrance, new plumbing, HVAC, electrical, and lighting, and adding height-appropriate handwashing sinks for children in the classrooms to meet state requirements. And that concludes the project.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
How many square foot are you going to be adding to the building?
I have the most percentage added to the building. It's reworking the current layout.
You need to come up to the, you need to come up so we can hear you.
So we aren't adding to the building, we'll be reworking the internal structure of the building to be, to create a new classroom, so.
So there's no square footage added? It's just, you're just kind of doing?
It's just reworking what we have currently, yes, in the building. Yep.
What would be the increase in capacity?
Nineteen students.
Nineteen more.
Nineteen more, yep. And that can be in any range from infant to two. So we could utilize that room for either infants or twos, just depending on demand.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion by Colister, close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Holm. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to our consent agenda, consisting of the minutes of the July 17th, 2023, regular city council meeting. Our bill is payable through August 7th, 2023, in the amount of $325,039.18, and a renewal of a Class C retail alcohol license filed by Carson's Celebration of Life Center. Motion by, motion by Colister, seconded by Coolman. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Item nine is new business, or excuse me, item nine is old business, and we have no old business. Item 10 is new business. We start off with A being a resolution, pledging local match support for the Sunshine Learning Center project in the amount of $120,000 payable out of the American Rescue Plan Act fund contingent on the actual award of the Community Development Block Grant funding.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't recycle too much information here, then I'll turn it over to you all. I'll just add that, you know, in between our last meeting three weeks ago and now, you know, we've received one email inquiry wondering how the path of funds occurs here. Is it our tax dollars? It's federal funds, not necessarily our general fund or local option sales tax. That same email was also curious as to how they can get their local board considering something like this too. But, you know, we've spoken at this at a couple group settings, one being at Macocota Art Experience, and spoke on KMAQ on this specifically on the radio. I haven't effectively heard anyone say no to this, this is not a good idea, so I don't think that this comes with too much resistance, and I think it's a smart move for the city council to support this. And I think the number-one kind of question that we received internally and externally is that this expenditure is completely contingent on even if a grant is awarded, and that's the important part to remember.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address this? Don't all come at once.
I am Kelly Borman. I was formerly Kelly Mulhouseen. I went to Sunshine starting at six weeks old, phased out of age, then turned around and worked at Sunshine for several years, and now my two-and-a-half-year-old goes there, and he has gone there since, he's premature, we won't get into that, but he's gone there since the minute he could start going there. I also work in education, and I can just tell you the difference that we see when kiddos walk in the door of kindergarten who have been to a center that is as rich in love and experiences as Sunshine is, its landslide's different than kiddos who don't get that experience, that is not putting down in-home daycares. It's just saying the center experience is completely different than an in-home experience. I know that when I was younger, we had a lot more outside activities at Sunshine, the rooms were set up different, because the cost of running the center was different when fun, when expenses were vastly different back then. I would love to see this grant awarded, or your guys' match to the grant awarded, to continue to give my son the experiences that I had. I can still sing the Sunshine songs. I still have my Sunshine bags. He comes home every day telling me about what he's done, and I just don't want to see that falter, because the center is not up to the amazing capacity that it absolutely can be with your guys' support.
I got a question. Do you still have the caterpillar that's made off the popsicle stick?
And the clothespin. I actually just pulled out of my parents' attic. My mom scrapbooked every project that we made, so if you want your footprint in a color of paint and then turn into something, Sunshine is your go-to, because they will get it done. I am talking St. Patrick's Day, Valentine's Day, Rudolph, all of it, all the above. I can't say enough good things about what Sunshine has to offer, and allowing them this opportunity to expand, grow, and get to where they need to be, because that back row is full of a lot of hearts that give, the love they give to those kiddos is, it's phenomenal, and they deserve to go to work every day in a place that they can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess before we vote, I do have one thing I want to ask you guys. Is there any way, like, can we make that flying thing out at the airport an annual thing, because that was something that really needed to be brought back? And I give you credit for bringing it back, because that's something that Macocota always drew some people to Macocota, so no matter how this goes, can you guys make sure you do that every year?
Yes, no, that would be awesome. Yeah, that'd be great.
If you're, if you're going to speak, you need to come up to the podium.
I was just going to talk about the flying breakfast. One of the pilots that was there at this one had mentioned maybe doing a, like a barbecue, like maybe not doing a breakfast, but doing a barbecue. So that's just something we were tossing around too.
I mean, I think it's great, the fundraising that you guys were doing, because I kind of follow it on Facebook and so on and so forth, so I mean, I give you guys credit for, you know, bringing that back, and like, like I said, I love seeing the nostalgia of Macocota that I seen as a kid, being brought back with the next generation that's kind of taking over and like, just kind of keeping it rolling. I love that, I truly do, so, like I said, I give you credit for that.
We're there for the love of the kids, not for the pay. Yeah, because everybody knows that, so, but yeah.
I was a Sunshine kid.
Yeah, I know.
Ma'am, ma'am. First and last name for minutes, please. No worry. Linda Moore.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Here we have a motion by Colister, seconded by Simonsen? Seconded by Lyon?
Thirded by Caroline.
All right. Go with, go with Lyon.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Okay, passes.
Sir.
Hi, my name's Tim Reese. I recently moved here about three years ago from the Scottsdale, Arizona area, primarily because it was a small town to raise kids in and close enough to Chicago that we could drive to. I'm an artist, so I have a studio gallery downtown, and I'm constantly in communication with my colleagues, particularly back west. And since COVID, a lot of them have been thinking about moving away from the west and to small towns like this, and so I've been in communication with three of them, one from Arizona, one from Utah, one from California, the Bay Area, who have all expressed interest in moving out here. And the first question that they've all asked is about childcare. So they, they're full-time artists, their wives are typically working as well, and they need childcare. One of them actually came out to visit and did tour Sunshine. At the time, I think the waitlist was pretty tremendous, twenty-six kiddos or something like that. So it was just prohibitive at that time for him to move out here. So speaking from my field and my perspective, I can tell you that you can enhance the diversity of the community and bring some cultural elements to the community by expanding Sunshine and allowing more people like myself to move out here. It did take a while for us to get our daughter into Sunshine, but we're very happy that we did. It's been a huge help.
Thank you. All right, well, that resolution did pass, by the way, so you're on your way. Do you have anything to add?
Hopefully we get a grant. That's all.
All right, we move on to item B, it's a resolution approving the city of Macocota's Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment.
I don't have anything further to add, Mayor, in the next two or three here.
Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Lyon, seconded by Alinger. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item C is a resolution approving Community Development Block Grant for the city of Macocota Public Facilities and Services Project. Motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Holm. Any discussion? And take the roll.
Simonsen.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Item D is a resolution to approve the State of Iowa Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, duplication of benefits, policies, and procedures. Motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Item E is a resolution authorizing the filing of a grant application with the Iowa Department of Transportation for Traffic Safety Improvements Program, TSIP funding for the Main Street and Summit Street Safety Project.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Mayor, I had to take along on this one, just to kind of at least show you what's being hoped for in this diagram, and I realize this image is a bit fuzzy, it could be a whole page, but long story with this, this kind of comes out of the Traffic Safety Action Plan slash, we've always talked about Main and Summit being an intersection of concern. At least once, maybe even twice, the state of Iowa did a safety audit at the intersection, and the 2017 report gave out a dozen or so recommendations. This, you know, and one of those recommendations was a roundabout, and we kind of said no to that, because it would require a number of different other steps that are concerning. But, you know, this line of sight issue is there, coming up to the intersection at the stop sign, there's very little paint on the intersection as is, which Frank is about to address this week, I believe, and what we wanted to do here is expand city intersection to what we can for right-of-way, and that's what the result of this is. And I know it sounds too good to be true, but Chandra from ECIA has wanted to include this project in his submission for a traffic safety grant for the state. That's a hundred percent state-funded source up to five hundred, and so we had Jackson County Engineering Department get together with us and at least put an engineering estimate and design to that safety audit recommendation that we had. So what they're seeking, what ECIA is seeking from you tonight, is a preliminary approval, a preliminary one, that this makes sense for you all and for the safety of the city. I just wanted to be transparent with you that that's, was what this is, and this is what a potential diagram would look like if that intersection is awarded a grant.
Don't move.
Here we have a motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Rick Earl. Any discussion?
How much, like, say if this, say if we get it or whatever, how much more into the right-of-way are we going to go to round this out?
I don't have an exact figure, but I can give you an example, that Bowman Oil sign that's there is in right-of-way.
Okay.
That's how much right-of-way we're not using yet. We're seeing all those semis turn like they are. I mean, I could have expanded further, but I can't take my truck and turn without my back right wheel hitting one of those curbs, so there's huge surface area concerns at this location.
So somewhere like around, I'm guessing like five, six foot, give or take?
Yeah.
Something like that?
Right.
There's probably not much right-of-way on the west side, correct? Because I mean...
Not that I'm aware of. We've had a little bit of conversation around the retaining wall. That's mostly a line of sight issue. We don't intend to put a sidewalk on the southwest corner of that. It's mainly on that side, making a more gradual turn than it is that sharp right that results in those storm drains being beat down.
Is that southwest corner retaining wall city or private property?
It's ours to maintain for now.
Okay, so that'll probably be maintained as part of the deal.
Yeah. Yeah. There will, as I mentioned in my last sentence, there's going to be some cooperation with private owners about like line of sight specifically, and when the mayor, Frank and I, and engineering were out there, we were there for probably twenty minutes, and we actually watched a car go through twenty miles per hour, maybe fifteen or so, probably saw, didn't see the stop sign, I don't know what the case would have been, but if you would have been traveling from the other direction, there's a chance that, you know, you may have not seen that car coming, so there's, there's sight issues there, and they would hope to lower that retaining wall, actually ingrate that land at a more gradual rate to some of these property corners, and that makes the most sense from a safety perspective.
So are they going to, are they, are you planning to move all four stop signs back? They're going to have to be moved.
Due to the new layout, all the stop signs will have to be relocated.
Relocated, yeah, okay.
And if you guys notice on the southeast corner, that their radius is larger than the other
Yes.
three corners just for the semi-traffic.
Yeah.
We worked that in there.
That's great.
Great, okay. We have no more questions. Go ahead and take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Simson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item F is a resolution approving WHKS professional services bid in the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars payable out of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for the review of engineering inspection and project management of the East Water Tower painting project. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council, Mayor. This one, Jake and Jeff from Alliance have been working with us to select a qualified firm. And the recommendation here is four letters that you're pretty familiar with, that we've yet to have a bad experience with. But their cost estimate was by far the best in this service. And my best guess is that much of the team that's going to be here for inspection on the wastewater treatment plant can just pop down Main Street or up Main Street, whatever you want to call it, and take a look at the water tower painting. So I think that there's a lot of overlapping services and this is smart. And the state uses WHKS to be their on-call consultant for coding issues. The primary issue here, and I don't know if you know much about water towers or want me to divulge too much, but you can see these things go bad quickly. And I get high strung or have an experience from DeKalb where my former boss had an issue with an engineering firm and a painter about who was at fault for not identifying what happened inside the tank. You have the wrong painting specs bid here. And then before I say a number, that I just know that was a few million gallon tank on the south side of I-88. But it went from an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar painting job to a one-point-three change order, one-point-three million. So it's possible for have these things to go bad. I don't want necessarily someone from city staff to be at fault if there's something bad happening. And I want some true experts on this case. And I think WHKS has proven that they're a qualified firm to do so.
Okay.
What's the painting going to cost?
We don't know yet, but you know, between what we have set aside in art before and that eighty thousand, we have ninety-four thousand in current CIP set aside. Please note my comment that that few million gallon tank was an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar job. This is a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-gallon tank. Jeff spoke with, I think, one of the Alliance superiors last year about the job and was at a conference where a painter threw a number out there of about ninety, but it seems too good to be true. Rather just make sure we get, you know, a good bidding out there, good specifications right away, and we do this the right way.
Did any other engineering firms bid on this?
Three others.
What were their costs? I think forty thousand's outrageous.
Well, the, the other one we frequently use was a hundred, about a hundred and ten. And then there was a hundred and seven, and then there was one at about sixty. So thirty-seven was the best of the group here.
Engineers own us. It's ridiculous.
Good gig if you can get it.
Everything we do. They're going to drive up the road, two blocks, and they're going to charge forty grand. Stupid.
Well, some of them are probably going to climb up that tower.
I don't believe that.
You can't pay me forty K to do that.
I'd do it for twenty.
It is frustrating that you had to watch, you hire a painter to do a special project and you got to make sure that they use the right stuff.
Yeah.
I guess if it's a ninety-thousand-dollar project, then hopefully it's not a... Half of it in engineering. I agree. It's stupid.
This is not just painting the outside of the tower. This is also, you know, planning for inspection of the inside and the coating in there. And all of the antennas that you see on that tower, they're, they're going to be managing those too.
Well, do we have a motion on either? We got a motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. If we have no more discussion, take the roll.
Colister.
When will we know the cost? Like, don't, don't they normally set their cost by the cost of the project? How in the, did they come up with thirty-seven thou, or, yeah, thirty-seven thousand when they don't know the cost of the project?
Yeah, that could be subject to change, but it's also based on a 2018 inspection report as well. That's been helpful to this bidding cycle is having that report available already to them.
Yes. I want to see that report.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Simson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item G is a resolution waiving competitive bidding and engaging DGR engineering for the complacent of Iowa Department of Trans, Iowa Department of Natural Resources Air Quality Construction and Operating Permit in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for the wastewater treatment plant project.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So we were, I guess this starts a little bit with MMEU, but the wastewater treatment plant alters the MMEU operating permit because of our generator change. So this is a service that is apparently required. And I've been pushing this along for months, questioning the validity of it. And about one or two months ago, I got to someone at DNR in a meeting who said, yes, this is required. You have to do this. And WHKS does not have this in their scope of work and recommends working with this DGR firm, who also is, who MMEU is with. WHKS's plan is to turn over their data to DGR so they can complete these permits. I suppose the ultimate fear in this, and then questioning some things at this point, is that the wastewater treatment plant could be brought to a pause again. And it may cause some real financial issues down the road with some of our grant compliance. So, you know, especially with engineering services and some of these very, very fine and high professional skilled jobs, there's an exemption in our purchasing policy for, for bidding them out. And based on kind of the, the direction WHKS wants to go on this and based on what's in our purchasing policy, I'm recommending moving forward with this tonight to get this permit moving and moving past this. And this will eventually go back into those sewer loans that we have for the future. So that's kind of where we stand on it. It's not something I'm happy to present, but it's one of those required steps that I feel like we can't get out of in any way.
Do we have a motion?
You know what's worse than engineers? The DNR.
Right.
Enforcing a project that we had to spend how many millions on, and then it's, you got to pay this permit, you got to pay this permit. And pretty soon we're going to have a beyond disaster.
Just pay for the change orders.
Oh, my God.
Well, do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Okay, we got a motion by Colister.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Coolman. If we have no more discussion, take the roll.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Simson.
No.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item H is a resolution accepting Dubuque Racing Association Core Grant Award of twenty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of initial site preparation and final design on the Green Space Redevelopment Project. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This one should hopefully bring you just a bit more joy than talking about engineers and DNR a bit. But, you know, I guess the best reference I think I can offer here at this point is that Lincoln Park and DeWitt did this twelve years ago about and, and started with some things. And the recommendation from the University of Iowa Student Group was to get started with site preparation. And we're working towards a final design. And so we'd like to stretch that twenty-five thousand dollars pretty far here in the, in the fall to make sure that we end up in a good spot for the spring and for future grant applications. I put together a traff, I'm sorry, traffic, put together an events data table that kind of shows our rising event applications in the green space. And then I called, I think it's the Coronado Car Club who manages that and asked how many people come to each of your events. And they're doing them twice a year now. And that's how I got to some event estimation numbers based on our event application. So all this to say, I think that this is a, a good and smart start to this project overall. It doesn't involve city money and allows us to start preparing that site for what can happen there someday, as long as we get the appropriate funding together.
Okay, sounds like a good plan. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Home. Any more discussion? Take the roll.
Alinger.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Simson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item I is a resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for issuance and securing the payment of one million, five-hundred-thousand-dollar water revenue capital loan notes, taxable series 2023 of the city of Macochota, state of Iowa, under the provisions of the state code of Iowa and providing for a method of repayment of those notes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to try to summarize the next three resolutions in my description here. You previously approved with the previous city manager and the Platt Street project, potentially loaning up to some large amounts with USDA that are repayable by utilities. And those rate increases have already been calculated, what citizens are already experiencing.
Have we heard anything on that?
Excuse me?
Has City Hall heard anything on that?
On rate increases? A little bit, but it's not been extraordinary. You know, I, you know, I'm going to sidetrack myself here for a second, but wages tend to be increasing a little bit. And inflation, meaning groceries, seems to have stabilized some, so I think that has a good effect. I will say that, you know, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have four water shut-offs this week. We anticipate those.
Right.
That's the lowest number we've heard in a real long time. So, you know, half the month experienced that seven-point-five in terms of actual consumption. So, you know, but we, we would have thought that it'd be more. But I guess if you get calls on it, this is the last seven-point-five and every single year thereafter is three percent. Back to my point on this, a lot of the rate increases and kind of the financial council we had on this was already included in it. But the Platt Street project on this particular resolution for, for water ended at one-point-five instead of up to one-point-five-three-three. This is way better. On the next two, it's way better, the numbers, what I'm trying to say. But the theory behind that was that you loan out just in case things went really, really bad on Platt Street and we end up not needing all that money. So we want to prompt repaying that as soon as possible because here's why. Last year, when we renewed these resolutions with interim financing with the bank and the Macochota State Bank becomes involved with this because they hold interim loans, USDA comes in and sweeps those and we start repaying USDA on a forty-year term. So the rate last year in July was two percent at Macochota State Bank. And about a month and a half ago, it's about six percent now. And if you add these three together, you start thinking about what six percent is on three million dollars. It's about a hundred and eighty a year. And so we know that during financial closeout of the Platt Street project, you all will probably see Platt Street finished, but Platt Street's going to be on my mind for another eighteen to twenty-four months, which will be real lovely. But as we close these out, I don't want us to sit here and incur another hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year. So what we did is calculate what we have a claim to, finalize out all the claims, receive that, close a loan, start repaying it. And then if we have anything come up in the future with the I dot final audit, it's available for us to, you know, have a funding source in this. So that is really kind of the larger explanation about what these three are. But this is kind of a classic instance where our bond counsel attorneys have sent these resolutions to us. And there's some pretty extraordinary paperwork in your council backup packet regarding this. But I tried to lay it out as best as I could in this three paragraph or two paragraph summary. And I, I guess I'll take any questions if you have them. But it was kind of a calculation of when to close based on that new rate Macochota State Bank was offering.
Still moved.
Give you a motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. If there's no more discussion, take the roll.
Home.
Yes.
Simson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item J is a resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for issuance and securing the payment of one million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar stormwater revenue capital loan notes, taxable series 2023 of the city of Macochota, state of Iowa, under the provisions of the city code of Iowa and providing for a method of payment of those notes.
Still moved.
Motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Simson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item K is a resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar sewer revenue capital loan note, taxable series 2023B of the city of Macochota, state of Iowa, under the provisions of the city code of Iowa and providing for a method of payment of those notes. Motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Home. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Simson.
Yes.
All right, that passes. We make it to item I. And the, and ordinance amending the city of Macochota code of ordinances by adopting Title III Community Protection, Subchapter 7B, Mobile Food Vendors. This is the first reading. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Didn't know where to exactly introduce this ordinance in terms of council committees, but we ended up with the finance and personnel in the spring and tried comparing what some external fees are. And ended up with some of those fees that are listed in your background here. But it's, it's kind of our opinion that, you know, we really need to be checking and making sure that these food trucks in town are licensed with the state and do have insurance in case something goes bad, especially on city property. And that's how this was exactly born. So I've had a couple highlights here, highlighting one, a very, very small fee compared to others of just a fifty-dollar annual permit. We've already contacted many of our food trucks that we routinely see here in the city and they're expecting this. We let them know that we're going to do this on a calendar year basis and we have some proactive work done. There's a bit of a distinction between a food truck event that will be on public property versus one on private property. We assume and hope the code is written here so that if a food truck is asked, they have to furnish proof that they have consent of the private property owner to be on their property. But they still require a license. And so if you want to have a food truck event on public property, all we're requesting still is an event application that we typically do. Couple exemptions that we saw in other ordinances and it was fairly common was what to do with some of those current events that have food trucks or maybe there's a struggling financial situation. We specifically wanted to exclude Jackson County Fairgrounds events and Macochota Farmers Market activities. And then this permit will be valid for one year, being the calendar year, January first to December thirty-first. So it's been several months since the Finance and Personnel Committee and the staff met to take any questions on this. But I think that this is a necessary step to make sure that a lot of these visiting trucks are following the rules.
So is this fifty dollars, is sort of it's only if it's on public, like say like on city street or something public? So say if it's on a private ground, they don't have to have the fifty?
They, they do have to have in both instances, public and private. The difference is that if you're on the Tyson's parking lot, for example, we expect that you're able to furnish proof that you have consent to be there from Tyson's management or whoever.
I see. So it's just no matter what, if you have a food truck, you have to pay the city fifty dollars.
Right.
No matter what, how are we going to know if they paid the city fifty dollars? Are you guys going to issue them like a sticker?
Yes, we are. Yep, I, I should have included that. There'll be some sort of eye-catching piece of paper, note card or larger that says, you know, city of Macochota license number, something to that nature that they'll have available to them.
So also say, for instance, say if I had a birthday party and I wanted to bring in a food truck, they have to register with the city fifty dollars, so on and so forth?
Yes.
Okay.
Then when you get them registered, I'll have a party.
And like the little stickers on our license plates, you're going to change the color every year so that you can tell the glaze.
Do something.
I will say, you know, my former police officer career, there was a year where they went from white to something of a soft yellow, body yellow. And from, you could only tell the difference from ten feet away. So it will be a little bit different than that.
All right.
Still moved.
Here we have a motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Home. If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Lyon.
No.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman.
No.
Alinger.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Simson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Okay, I believe that passed, didn't it, Judy?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Well, we're almost there, kids. Item M is a discussion and possible motion approving change order number one in the amount of forty-six dollars and sixty-one cents to FEH Design for Sunshine Learning Center Project and approval of payment in the amount of five thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Colister, seconded by Lyon. If we have no discussion, take the roll.